Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Prior Lake Board of Education. If everyone would stand as they're able and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all members are present this evening. So first on the docket is Laker Pride, Dr. Thomas.
Thank you so much, Chair White. And I want to highlight our student board rep, Anne Pham, who is not able to join us this evening, but in her absence, I do want to just share our appreciation for her. She'll be coming up on the end of her tenure here as a student rep. I think she's done a fabulous job, and I really appreciate the student council at the high school being a part of the conversation here at the board meetings, because I think that brings a really unique perspective. And so I have a certificate to recognize her for that. And I also just want to congratulate her on being a board scholar as well. So she's one of our top students in the district, and so we've got a nice card for her, along with everyone else, to recognize her and wishing her well as she goes off to college in the fall. So, and she's staying close, so I'm sure we'll keep tabs on her.
All right, thank you. And then next is the superintendent report, Dr. Thomas.
Yes, thank you. Oops. So tonight, I've asked Principal Kabushak and Bezek to join us this evening to give us an update on how our new protocols around cellphones, namely at the secondary, some changes there at the secondary, and how that's been going this year. And so I'm going to ask the two of them to start off the update with that brief report.
All right. Good evening, Board Chair White, other directors. I wanted to just give a little bit of an update at the middle school. If you remember, we last spring had a group of teachers that were really kind of a driving force behind looking at increasing our cellphone policy at the middle school, because the previous year, we had our policy where students had their phones away during the class period, but they had access during passing time and during lunch. And so we had a strong support of staff, over 90% of our staff were in support of expanding that. So we went to a new policy this year where students had their phones away from 7:20, which is the first bell ring, until 2:06. During that time, the phones should be in the students' backpacks or in their lockers. I will report that it has gone well this year. You always wonder how a change like that is going to go, and, you know, each grade level is different, because our sixth graders are new, they're coming from the elementary, they haven't had their cellphones, it's not really new to them, it's going to be more our seventh and eighth graders that have had some experience with cellphones during the school day. But it's gone really well. I would say, on average, we still maybe collect a couple phones a day, but that hasn't been a problem. We took a lot of time in the beginning of the year sending communication home with parents, so that they were aware of what the policy change was. And it took time with teachers and with students, talking about what the procedures are, what the expectations are, and what happens if a student is using their cellphone or technology during the day. We continue to revisit those things with students at the start of every quarter, just like we do the other expectations. Actually, I'll say, as we move into next year, the group we need to spend more time educating is our parents, because I would say the number-one rule breakers are the parents texting their students during the school day, even though the students' phones are in their backpacks. So I think that we want to make sure that we connect with parents of if you need to get ahold of your student during the day, how, what does that procedure look like? So that's the update at the middle school.
Thank you.
Good evening. At the high school, we were looking at, obviously, we knew the middle school was having conversations, and we were asked at the high school if we wanted to go in that direction. And we were already planning at limiting them during the class time, and that's where we landed. I believe, I have, I'm not aware of a high school in the metro that, you know, I interact with a lot of them, that have gone to a full ban, it's just not as practical at the high school, students and their lives and things that they have going on. But we have cellphones off during class time, so, and it's going well. I really do think it's going well. We did a mid-year survey of staff and students, and got 105 staff to respond and 1,500 students on how they felt it was going. It was interesting to see the, a little bit of dichotomy of opinion between the two on how they feel it is affecting their daily lives. And Jenny Zumbusch has this, so she could probably share this with you, if you want to see the, you know, the broader survey, but just pulled out a few things here. Positive impact on students' ability to focus, staff thought it was at 89%, felt that was, they agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. Students, 20% were, were they landed on that? Prompted students to interact with their peers more, staff felt that strongly of that at 80%, and students were at 15. Would recommend we continue the policy, staff was at 83%, and students were at 14. And recommending a full ban, would you want to go to a full ban? Staff was only at 32% on that, and students were at, I've never seen students this united, they were at 2% on that one. So, you know, I think what we are doing is working, it's easier when we have that expectation that they're off in all classes in the past, we didn't have that, teachers would, some would, some wouldn't, so then you were the bad guy, and it was just a little more confusing. So it does make sense, that's what people were asking. So now it's easy for everyone to say, no, we just don't have them out during class time. So at passing or at lunch, you can look at your phones, because kids have jobs, have parents, that they're picking up younger kids, and it's just, it seems more realistic. So we're having, and kids, I think, even though they're not crazy about it, and would like to go back to, hey, I could use it whenever I want, kids will follow reasonable rules, so it seems like it's reasonable and it's working. So, yeah, that's where we're at at the high school, so.
Any questions for George on?
For either one of you, I understand the year's not over yet. Have you seen any academic increase, grade-wise, for either high school, middle school, as far as that?
You know, anything would be anecdotal, because how would you, we don't have that isolated. I think if you say, if teachers are saying that kids are more focused and, you know, less disruptions, that that's going to have a positive impact, but it's hard to say that that's an isolating factor on that. I would say that we have less of the, I asked the APs, I said, anything that you'd want me to share, because, you know, they deal more directly with things, they said, probably see a little less of the, you know, day drama on phones, you know, because sometimes if something happens, everybody, if everybody's on their phone, you can, things happen, can spread instantaneously. So, you know, I think maybe a little drop in that, you know, but it's tough, like I said, it's tough to.
Yeah, no, I would echo the same thing. As far as specific grades, I wouldn't be able to give an answer to that, but the teachers are definitely commenting on the engagement with the students, and they're seeing the students, even though the high school students may say they're not connecting with their classmates as well, the teachers are definitely seeing that connection between the students as they're talking in class. And we also are seeing a definite reduction in cellphone issues related to school.
I have a question. I know when we introduced the Live More Screen Less, part of the concept was to get the kids to buy off on it. So understand that that, that has happened, my understanding, at the middle school, but to Mr. Bezek, how do you get the kids to buy off on this?
You know, it's that piece of, this is reasonable expectation. You're in class, we have, you know, you're supposed to be focused on class, you can put it away for a half an hour, 45 minutes, you know, you can get by without needing to, if you really had something you need to check, you get to check in between classes or you get to look at it during lunch, and most kids are like, yeah, that makes sense. It's hard for them to argue that that's unreasonable.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Director Franz?
Are we still using Live More Screen Less? I didn't think we were, no, we weren't.
No, no, this is, I think, referencing the initial conversation that we had.
Couple years ago, okay, yes, yes, last year, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you both, and, you know, I think, and just to add a little bit to this, I think we're shifting a culture, particularly at the high school. I mean, there's a certain level of dependency that unfortunately has been created, and we're seeing multiple reports about that. So I think consistency in time, and that's going to be the key. You know, the culture that many folks, adults as well, are just glued to their phones, to detach from that, you know, they're, you know, even, maybe you're looking at some of the same news stories I am with AI chatbots and taking place of human relationships and having friends that are actually AI bots, you know, it's clearly, we're going to a whole different space with this, and that's not what we're trying to replicate in our schools. So I think that it's consistency in time, and I think similarly with our dress code policies, too. That's something that we want to make sure that we continually stay up on, like, as we go into this week of almost 80 degrees, we'll start to do some reminders at our campuses to say, okay, remember, we have a dress code policy that changed last year, and the weather, you know, will let us know how the long-term memory is working versus the short-term memory. So again, we want to make sure that our schools are conducive for learning and respectful spaces, that all students feel comfortable. So thank you both for your continued work on that. Just a couple of quick more reports. Just want to share that on May 19th, we plan to have a deeper conversation around our budget and also school closure-type scenarios discussion, and that will be on the 19th, and in advance of that, when we upload the documents to Board Book on May 12th, on that day, any buildings that will be part of that discussion, we'll be having some conversations with staff at those respective sites that first thing that morning, because once it goes into Board Book, the chatter will start, you know, around the community. So I just want folks to be aware of that, that we're in discussions around this, we're not making decisions on the 19th. And so we'll have that conversation, and then we have our town hall on May 21st from 6:00 to 7:00, likely be kind of an extension from where we land on the 19th to enhance additional engagement with our community. That will be at Prior Lake High School, as we typically have it. And then last, Thursday, May 15th, at Prior Lake High School, at their Activity Center, is our annual retirement celebration, disqualified celebration. So feel free to come out in the afternoon to say congrats and thank yous to many of our folks who are going to do their next best thing and retire. So with that, Chair, I turn the floor back to you.
All right, thank you. Next on the agenda, or on the docket, is one proclamation for School Communicators Week. Director Olsted, would you mind reading the proclamation?
School Communicators Appreciation Week, May 5th through the 9th, 2025. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools proudly recognizes May 5th through 9th, 2025, as School Communicators Appreciation Week. Whereas National School Communicators Day is May 9th, 2025, whereas clear, transparent communication with students, families, staff, and the community is essential, whereas school communicators build trust and support through effective outreach and engagement, whereas they uphold high ethical standards and serve as strategic partners to district and school leaders, whereas they amplify the district's mission, goals, and message to the broader community. Therefore, the Board of Education extends its sincere appreciation to all Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' communication professionals, and declares May 5th through 9th, 2025, as School Communicators Appreciation Week.
Thank you for that proclamation, and I want to just thank our small but mighty communications crew, whether it's Amy, who greets you with a smile each day out front, or Julia, who processes a lot of information for our community, or Liz, who does her bi-weekly sauna in the back room there with our board meetings, and Kristi, who's managing crisis communication or just strategic and general district information and coordinating with a lot of community partners. This team is an amazing group, and I'm truly blessed to be able to work with them each and every day, as we all are throughout the district. So thank you for recognizing them this week.
All right, thank you. Next up is the open forum. This is a 15-minute period of time set aside for the board to receive citizen input. We do have a full docket of five speakers tonight, so if each speaker would kindly respect the three-minute time limit, it would be greatly appreciated. Our first speaker is John Crywee, to speak on busing issues.
I have four items I'd like to talk to you about. The first one is, I'd like to go back to work. I am a bus driver on, or bussy, student transportation. On March 15th of this year, I disarmed a third-grade student on my bus from, with a lacrosse ball. His mother decided that I created an assault and reported me to the police department. At that point, obviously, I'm no longer able to drive. The county attorney has not opened that file at all at this point, and basically, I'm unable to drive my bus. So I've been off for six weeks because I disarmed an ADHD student on the bus with a lacrosse The other point I need to point out is, you do not tell me at all about any student and their medical or other disciplinary issues, and it's a big problem, especially at the beginning of the year. Just so you understand, if I was hit with that ball, the student was seven foot away from me, and I'm going 55 miles an hour, we could have a significant accident, okay? I have been hit already twice this year with objects on the bus, okay? So I would like to know more, I'd like to know more at the beginning of the year, if there are students with this. Now, at the end of the year, after the 10 bus conduct reports and discipline issues, they kind of tell everybody who they are. So I kind of knew about this particular student. I will also tell you that this third-grade student, in my opinion, sexually assaulted a second grader. So I would like to know more about it. I realize there's data practices involved and so on and so forth, but we really do need to know it for safety issues. Now, obviously, I've been doing this for eight years, by the way, and I get the hard routes, okay, the ones that have all the difficult people on them. And we happen to have a extra camera that's held over from the, putting them in all the vans, and you'll never guess where my boss wants to put that camera, in my bus. Okay? And please, one more thing, if you're talking about cellphone usage, you need to understand that that needs to be part of the bus rules, too. You cannot record on the bus whatsoever, and the elementary students should not even have cellphones on the bus. Please, it's very important, I can't tell you how many disturbances and so on that I break up every year with people taking pictures and, basically, causing disturbances on the bus with their cellphones in the middle school.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Next speaker is Katie Gabriel, talk about listening to student voices.
Good evening, Chair White, Dr. Thomas, and directors. My name is Katie Gabriel, I use she/her pronouns, and I have two students in the district. I'm grateful to be a part of a district that is centered on students. They are the heart of the district and should be at the center of each and every conversation you have at that table and every decision you make. As a parent rep on the district's Educational Equity and Excellence Advisory Committee, I served on the Student Voice Subcommittee. I'm grateful to have had the opportunity to listen and hear from student leaders about their experiences in our schools and how they would like to depict those experiences on a mural in the high school media center. District students have navigated a lot over the last several years, including incidents of racial harm, events that could have easily built a wall of division amongst students. But did these students sit back and let that division build? No, they leaned in together, engaged in difficult conversations and learning, took action, and walked through those years together, finding that through building bridges, they are now even more united as a student body. They have learned and honed a skill that many adults in our community, throughout our country, and around the world have failed to grasp, how to build bridges, fostering connection and belonging, even while coming from different backgrounds, lived experiences, and belief systems. In this work, they have been a shining example to us all on how we need to move forward in this world. This strong and clear message has been one of my greatest learnings this past year. These students are leaders now, continually working for unity, seeking understanding, and celebrating each other, and I can't wait to see the leaders they'll be once they graduate. It is clear why the mural design, I believe they unanimously chose to have installed in the media center to reflect their time in our schools and to inspire future students, depicts the building of a beautiful bridge and the destruction of a wall. Inspired by phrases such as "spreading love not hate," "to inspire, love is understanding," and "building bridges not walls." While the symbolism of bridges, connection and bridging gaps, and walls, separation and division is not new, this message and the muralist's representation clearly depicts the reflection of student experience and leadership in our schools and in our community. I want to thank all the students involved in this initiative and for illuminating for us what it means to be bridge builders and true leaders. And I ask all of you at that table to ensure that our district is truly one that is centered on students, supporting and lifting up student voices. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mark Kleckner, to talk about fifth-grade teacher reduction concerns.
All right. Thank you, board members, Dr. Thomas, for this opportunity to speak. I'm a parent of a second and fourth grader at Hamilton Ridge Elementary. I'm here tonight because of the proposal to eliminate a fifth-grade teaching position at our school. This action of fourth class sizes up to an unacceptable 32 to 33 students per classroom. Pushing fifth-grade classes to this size contradicts our district's educational mission and is detrimental to student success. At this critical age, effective learning hinges on teachers being able to provide individual attention. Class sizes of 32 or more severely limits a teacher's ability to manage a classroom and meet the diverse needs of every child. We understand you face difficult budgetary discussions or decisions. However, your primary responsibility is to uphold the district's mission by prioritizing student learning. Cuts must align with this mission. Eliminating essential elementary school teachers and increasing class sizes directly undermines the quality of education our district promises and harms our children's foundational learning. I know that everyone sitting up here tonight is committed to providing the very best for our students, and several of you campaigned on raising test scores for our students in our district. I would ask anyone to explain to me how increasing class sizes would achieve that goal. I contend it would do exactly the opposite. Therefore, I implore you to reject this proposal. Preserving effective classroom environments must be the absolute top priority. This decision to eliminate a teaching position will negatively impact Hamilton Ridge's fifth-grade students and teachers, and potentially those in other elementary schools facing similar cuts. Please find an alternative solution that protects classroom quality and upholds our district's commitment to effective education. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dawn Lenio, again, to talk about elementary-level class sizes.
Good evening, school board. My name is Dawn Lenio, and I also have a second grader and fourth grader at Hamilton Ridge Elementary School. Tonight, I'd like to focus on talking about my 10-year-old's class. He is part of the Prior Lake High School graduating class of 2033. My fourth grader has an amazing teacher this year and is in a class of 24 students. I recently learned that next school year, he will likely be in a fifth-grade class of 32 to 33 students. I have tried to stay informed about school district happenings by showing up in this very room as often as possible, since our proposed district operating levy failed at the ballot last November. I'm not naive to the budget challenges that our district is facing and the hard decisions that you have to make as a school board. I am aware of the large budget cuts that have been in the works over the past months and in, and, sorry, and that additional budget cuts are needed next year. I was in this room listening as class size increases were discussed this winter. So while I've truly tried to understand what goes into the decision, when I learned that my 10-year-old could be in a classroom of 33 students in fifth grade, I simply couldn't see how this budget decision to increase the class size discussion cap is prioritizing our student-centered vision for this district. Our strategic plan states that one of our four top priorities is a positive learning environment, where staff are valued and students can fully engage in learning. I would encourage you, board members, to see if you could visit one of our district's fifth-grade classrooms, and then pull in some additional students, so that 33, 10, and 11-year-olds are together in the room, and then see how it goes. I understand that many fourth-grade parents have started emailing about this concern, and that we have received a response that class sizes are closely monitored throughout the summer, and adjustments will be made as needed. So I want to be clear, that I do understand that enrollment numbers are a moving target, updated weekly. I do understand that staffing changes are made well into the summer months as needed. But the concern current fourth-grade parents have currently is not about hypotheticals that could happen based on various factors. The concerns we have are about decisions that have already been made. We're concerned about how things stand currently, based on projected enrollment. We want you to reconsider class size caps across all grade levels at the elementary school, because 33 fifth-grade students in a classroom is not acceptable for a school district that claims we are world-class. Lastly, when the levy failed last November, I knew the impact would be felt at every level, in every building, by every educator, and eventually by every student. So while I'm here advocating for one of my learners tonight, I understand that this exact change will be coming to more of our schools and more of our grade levels next year. We have to do better for our students.
Thank you. And our final speaker of the night is Amy Cernicki, again, speaking on fifth-grade class sizes at Hamilton Ridge.
So close, it's Cernicki, but I always love to hear people just try it, just for fun.
I gave it a shot.
Yes, thank you, thanks for your good sport. My name is Amy Cernicki, and I am a parent of a current fourth grader at Hamilton Ridge Elementary. I also have a sixth grader at Hidden Oaks, and I am here on behalf of a fifth-grade teacher at Hamilton Ridge Elementary, that I'm going to read what they asked us to bring to the table tonight. So thank you for having us. To the members of the school board, I hope this message finds you well. I am writing to express my deep concern regarding the current fifth-grade class size at Hamilton Ridge Elementary, which is projected to start the upcoming school year with 33 students in a single classroom. As an educator, I respectfully urge you to consider adding an additional section of fifth grade to ensure a more effective and supportive learning environment for our students. Large class sizes present significant challenges to both teaching and learning. In a room of 33 students, it becomes exceedingly difficult for teachers to work with small groups or provide individualized attention, both of which are crucial during this formative academic year. Students at this age vary widely in academic readiness and social-emotional development. A smaller class size allows teachers to differentiate instruction more effectively, tailor support, and foster meaningful relationships with each student. Moreover, communication between school and families, an essential component of student success, suffers when a teacher is responsible for maintaining individual contact with the families of over 30 children. Building strong home-school connections takes time, trust, and consistency, all of which are harder to achieve with such a large group. Starting the year with an overcrowded classroom sends a message that compromises must be made at the expense of student learning and teacher well-being. Research consistently shows that smaller class sizes are linked to better academic outcomes, improved classroom management, and higher retention. In short, adding an additional fifth-grade section is not merely a logistical adjustment, it is an investment in student achievement, equity, and the quality of our school community. Thank you for your time, attention, and continued commitment to the best interests of our children. I hope you will seriously consider this request before the new school year begins. Sincerely, a fifth-grade teacher. Sincerely, a fifth grade teacher. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Before I entertain a motion to approve the agenda, just a reminder that I'm going to pull fourteen C, the Discussion on the Ad-Hoc Negotiations Committee, and we'll move that to the closed session as a larger discussion around negotiation strategy. So having said that, I will now entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So made.
By Vice Chair Bullion, second.
Second.
By Director Johnson. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero. Next on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Is there anything that anyone wants to pull from the Consent Agenda this evening? Okay, having hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
So made.
By Director France, second. By Director Olstead, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Next is a resolution for the acceptance of gifts that I will find here shortly. Okay, we have several gifts tonight from the Laker Education Foundation for $5,124 for Spring Grant Awards, from Mr. Tagworker, $500 for Westwood Elementary Resources and Supplies, from the Prior Lake Lions Club, $2,500 for Community Education Youth Scholarships, from Enterprise Knowledge Partners, $200 for CE Youth Scholarships, from the Prior Lake Savage Optimists, $1,000 for End-of-Year Service Awards, from the Prior Lake Lions Club, $1,000 for End-of-Year Service Awards, from the Prior Lake Rotary, $3,000 for the Pow Wow at Prior Lake High School, from the Prior Lake Rotary, $1,000 for the mural in the high school media center, from the Prior Lake High School Softball Boosters, $33,000 for a new scoreboard at Daggett Field, from PLAY, $28,270 for Wall Ball at Twin Oaks Middle School, and from the Prior Lake Girls Lacrosse and Laker Athletic Booster Club, $16,116 for Wall Ball at Twin Oaks. This will require a roll call vote, but I have a motion to approve these gifts.
So made.
By Director Johnson.
Second.
By Director Atkinson. Any discussion? All right, hearing none. Director Olstead.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bullion.
Aye.
Director France.
Aye.
And Director Mason.
Aye.
And aye, that carries seven zero with much gratitude. And then next, we do have Jamie Anderson and Mary Kay Lean from the Laker Education Foundation to speak on the Spring Grants.
We have a tennis.
Oh, you're right. My apologies. All right. Okay, we also have a gift to the Prior Lake Savage Area Schools from the United States Tennis Association totaling $48,075 for the resurfacing of the tennis courts at Prior Lake High School. And I will entertain a separate motion to accept that gift.
So made.
By Director Atkinson, second.
Second.
By Vice Chair Bullion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We have to take this in a roll call. All in favor, this will be a roll call vote. Director Olstead.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Bullion.
Aye.
Director France.
Aye.
Director Mason.
Aye.
And aye, and that carries seven zero. Now we will move on to the Laker Education Foundation Spring Grant Awards.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Good evening, Chair White, Dr. Thomas, fellow directors. My name is Jamie Anderson. I am the Executive Director for the Laker Educational Foundation. The Laker Educational Foundation, or LEF, serves to inspire and enrich innovation, creativity, and excellence for the staff and students of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. We really work to engage with our community, engage with our students and staff in a variety of different methods. So we have some different community outreach events. We partner with a lot of community partners, Rotary, Optimists, fellow businesses in our Prior Lake Savage area space, and we also do some fundraising, and our fundraisers help us to support our students and staff at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools through our annual grant program. So we offer this program in the spring of every year. Staff are encouraged to submit a proposal that will serve their students in a way that, again, meets our mission to inspire and enrich creativity, innovation, and excellence. So we're really looking for some unique ideas from our staff that are really going to help our students really push the limits on their educational experience. So this year, we have a member of our grant committee, Mary Kay Lean, who is going to share a little bit about the grants that we awarded this year and how we presented them to our staff.
Thank you. I just want to share very quickly, I'm a retired teacher of the district and very proud to now be able to be on the foundation board and to be able to give back to the district by helping students continually. Our grant process, like Jamie said, started in the spring, and then first part of April, the grant committee met, and we reviewed all the grants and determined the ones that we were recommending to be granted or to be recipients. And then after that, we met with the district's leadership team, took feedback and recommendations from them, and then it went to our LEF board. And again, we had to kind of, after we had our financial report, we had to make some modifications with the amounts, but we were still able to follow through with the grants that we originally ended with based on the leadership recommendations. To review them very briefly, there were communication boards that were at, I believe it's Hidden Oaks, and these are communication boards that would be in public areas such as a cafeteria, the gym, and the pod areas. So students that are dealing with speech and language challenges, they would have a way of communicating with the staff as well as with their peers. And this one, we could only partially fund, so we are setting up, we're taking the initiative of doing a fund-a-need at our Food Truck Fest on May 17th, where people can donate additional monies to this particular grant. Another one was for German Classroom novels, and this is going to be combined between middle school and high school. So it's a grant that's being split between both, but the teachers are looking to have actual novels for students in German. So they have some, when they have free reading time, they're continually challenging themselves by able to expand their knowledge of the German language. The Quiz Enhancement for Social Studies, this is a program that provides a variety of different avenues for students to take assessments, and it provides various ways that students with different learning styles will be able to understand and follow through with their knowledge in social studies. The Ninth Grade Compass Program, this one is a fund-a-need as well. And so for this one, it's providing tools for staff that work with the ninth graders during orientation and the foundations week, and it gives them tools that will enhance communicate, building communication and relationships with staff in the building, but also the peer-to-peer relationships, so they're feeling more comfortable as they transition to the high school. The STEMTastic Learning Bins, this is STEM resources in the Spanish language, and this one, of course, is promoting the scientific literacy, but in Spanish for the students. Another one for our Spanish Immersion Program is the Library Collection Enhancement, and for this one, it's updating resources for the first graders who do research in the area of Spanish countries. And then it's also updating resources for fourth graders who do research on the United States. And for this one, we were only able to partially support, so we are encouraging them to reach out to their PTC in the building to see if they can give additional resources because it's replacing resources that are ten to twenty years old. So it's giving them more current ones. The Digital Clocks, this was at Jeffers Pond, and it's providing digital clocks throughout the building, the hallways, the cafeteria, the gyms. And some students have a hard time with analog clocks, and so it's going to promote better telling time as well as some students not having the ability to stay on task but having the digital clocks as reminders to them. In this one, we also encourage them to reach out to their PTC for additional funding. The Calming Room at the high school, this one was also going to be a fund-a-need, and for the calming room, it's creating a different atmosphere, a more calming atmosphere in the room. And this is for students that deal with neurological trauma, and it's a center-based program, and it supports students when they're having a difficult time. It's helping them to self-regulate and having a room that will have the sensory tools. And the exciting thing about this one, it's a collaboration with the occupational therapists, the Special Education Department, and the Family and Consumer Science Department. In fact, they, the interior design class is doing the walls and the coloring in the room, and then the special ed department and occupational therapists are looking for the sensory tools that the students would need. Then there's the 12th Grade Diversifying Book Choices, and this is for 12th Grade English, and it's giving students for their book club unit opportunities to select novels that are a little more current, that they're seeing in the bookstores, that they're seeing online, and without always relying on the classics, and so being able to read some current novels and then have those discussions with their fellow classmates. Then we have the Enhanced Play-Based Learning, and this one is also going to be a fund-a-need. And this one supports providing opportunities for students to learn through play, and this is at Westwood Elementary, and providing them the tools such as like toys, kitchen materials, house play, all of those things that are so beneficial for students in those early years and understanding the socially-emotional learning that goes on through those tools. And then the final one is Mud Kitchens, and this is also a fund-a-need, and this is at Edgewood, and providing more materials for students in a very natured center play area and to utilize that area that we have at Edgewood, and again, giving students opportunities to use these tools for problem-solving, communication skills with their peers, so it enhances that experience for young children. So we're excited to present these grants, and we did this in a fun way. A week ago last Friday, we crashed the classroom. We coordinated with the building principals. We had the large check that the district has, and we crashed each classroom and went in and told the teacher what they were receiving. They got their grant packet, but it was also exciting to see the students and their excitement. Even 12th grade students were excited. So you can check our website, the district site, for the pictures of the students and the teachers receiving the grants. And based on that, I guess the only thing we have to say is we look forward to seeing you at the Food Truck Fest on May 17th, three to seven on Main Street.
All right. Thank you.
And before the two of you leave, I need to present a certificate of appreciation of our partnership and all the support you're providing our staff. And I'm going to ask that you step forward. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just because you're retired doesn't mean we don't have pictures. So thank you all. Really appreciate you all and all of the party.
Chair White, can I ask a quick question?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask a quick question?
You may.
I missed it, and apologies if it's somewhere in here and I missed it, but what was the total?
Over, it was $5,100, so $5,100.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And then why don't you share how much we've given total over the years?
Ooh, on the spot.
$305,000.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you do not have to ask me twice to go to Food Truck Festival.
Really great vendors this year. And live music, it'll be fun.
Yeah.
Frederickson?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your generosity. I just have a question about the clocks. Are they taking down the analog clocks to replace them with the digital clocks?
No.
Okay.
They're just adding the digital clocks to what they have.
Okay, because it kind of breaks my heart knowing that kids don't know how to read a clock. And so, and I understand also from teachers that they use them for some of their math curriculum as far as teaching angles and stuff like that. So it's encouraging to hear that the other clocks will stay up, so thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much again.
Yeah, thank you.
Next on the agenda is Personnel Items. Director Herman.
Chair White, members of the board, there are no personnel items for tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have no unfinished business, so new business, we have a budget update. Director Frederickson.
Thank you, Chair White, members of the board. You have two documents in your packet. These were two documents that we presented last Tuesday to the Finance Advisory Committee to get some feedback on. They have requested some additional information, so we will, we're working on putting together some more detailed information for you that we'll present at the 19th board meeting. But basically, the big huge spreadsheet, which I'm sure nobody can read because it's teeny-tiny, I apologize, but we were trying to put all the information on one sheet. We tried to break down this time to be as fiscally transparent as we can. We listed all of the state aid descriptions and then down the sides and then across the things that we have, that we spend the dollars on. We have the state aid, the levies, the other funds, and then the second page is how we're allocating all of those resources. So one of the things that you'll see is the revenue that we're anticipating is $122.2 million about, and then we're looking at, and the second document is from our audited financial statements. It shows you all of the fund balances that we currently have, and you'll see that we have a reserve, a section for reserve fund balance. Those are dollars that we've already gotten into the district. It's money we have in the bank, but you can't spend it on anything other than what the revenue was intended for. So if you don't spend it that year, you're required to put it into a reserve fund balance for future use for only those reasons. So one of the things that you'll see on this spreadsheet is that we're including the $982,000 from fund balance for the several of the different categories, for instance, literacy aid, capital or long-term facilities maintenance, staff development, and some compensatory dollars. So those are all money that we currently have. We're just looking at using those dollars to kind of round out the allocations that we have. So all, when all said and done, we've got $123 point, call it $123.2 million in expenses, and if you include that restricted fund balance, it'll be $122.2 million in revenue. So again, next board meeting, we'll have a much more thorough breakout of all of the, where the expense report, or expense numbers are different from they currently are this year. We did reduce the budget this next year by the $4 million, but as we updated the expenses for next year, there were some things that actually increased for next year. So for instance, special education, we did not make any reductions in special education, so obviously their salaries are going to continue to increase with the needs of the kids, so you won't see any reductions on the special ed section. So you won't see any reductions on the special ed section. But again, we're going to have a very detailed sheet for you at the 19th board meeting.
Any questions?
I had several that I sent in, actually, and I don't know if we want to cover those now or go more into detail on the 19th, I guess. But I think we've discussed a lot of it, too, at the finance committee, but I don't know what the preference is.
Would you prefer to meet privately with Director Frederiksen instead of discussing here, or?
Well, I mean, I guess
We're going to get a detailed
Yeah.
update on the 19th. Would that make more sense?
Well, I think that the general question also, you know, from both the finance committee as we reviewed, is just what, where the increase in expenses came from as, from prior forecast, which I think was around the October timeframe when it was submitted. So, you know, if you take the October forecast that was submitted, plus our $4.1 million worth of cuts, we've added about $2.4 million worth of expenses, and just trying to understand where that's coming from. If you could either bring that to the May study session to have available for discussion, I guess maybe that's fine, but.
Okay.
I think that would be helpful, and then just being able to compare to prior years. And then I think, you know, my second, you know, just comment is, I'm not personally a fan of looking at using reserve funds. I know they're restricted for purposes, but I do think that we need to come forward with expenses lower than our revenue, and making sure that we have some contingency in there as well, so.
Yeah. And, all right, thank you. Yeah, and I was in that finance meeting as well. And I think I would like to also understand where we started at from back in November, how the expense number changed. So I think, you know, I think it'd be helpful, actually, to see the same documents we saw in November when you started the budget process, from a consistency standpoint, so that we're seeing the same numbers. And then we can, you can help us understand where you saw the changes. I also understand we are seeing an increase in revenue, which is wonderful. So how are we using that revenue to, like, where is that revenue going, or where has it been allocated? You just mentioned something that's really interesting to me. You said that, something about special education. And I thought we did make cuts per Michelle Kukas' recommendation for some paras. And so I'm curious what the change was there.
Yeah, there was, I think, four paras reduced, but there were no teachers as we cut the $4.1 million. There were no teachers in there. So the teachers' salaries are going to increase based on their contracts. So there was no reduction there. You're actually going to see an increase.
I think also something else that's been very interesting on top of my mind is that as we see a large number of retirees, those are probably the most highest level of tenured teachers at some of the higher levels of salary. So as teachers retire and we hire lower-level tenured teachers, I'd love to understand how that impacts the budget as well.
So I can, I can just kind of give you an update on that. Because we were cutting staff this year, or for next year, those retiring teachers, very few of them are actually being replaced. So they are part of the reductions. And when we looked at the salary for next year, because we're far enough into the year, we are actually taking everybody's current salary this year and increasing it by the step in their contract. So we have actual salaries rather than projections. So we're able to give you real numbers for next year, with the exception that we haven't got a contract that's settled. So there will be presumably some changes in the contract settlement, but we advanced everybody an automatic step.
Hey, can I ask a question about that, actually, also?
Can I add something really quick? Sorry, I just think it might be important, too, for context. We're also, the last, I would say, two to three years, we're in a new staffing environment than we have been in the past. In the past, we've had a lot of new teachers that when we do hire, we're hiring them on at step one, step two. That is not what we're seeing in the market at all anymore. We're seeing where there's teachers moving from different districts. And in order to fill these positions, where in the past, we maybe had 10 to 15 applications, we now have like one to two. We're having to place them on steps higher than one to two in order to get them to meet their experience that they're bringing forward to us. So while in the past, replacing retired teachers with different teachers may have seen a bigger cost savings, we're just not seeing that anymore because we are bringing new teachers on at higher step placements than one and two, because we're getting more experienced teachers coming into our system versus newer teachers. So I would say that has definitely been a swing in the last three, two to three years.
Good to know. Thank you.
I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to add that context.
I appreciate that. I think related to that, I guess I was trying to understand, too, like, from a forecasting perspective, you know, you know, the existing teachers and the steps in the contract obviously isn't changed. So what, from a forecast perspective, change from October to now, right? So I don't know if there were, I mean, if these are existing employees, you know when they're eligible for step up, right, in those contracts, or is that not included in your forecast originally?
It is included in the forecast. But again, you're looking at it at a point in time. We're projecting what they're going to look like by the end of the year, projecting that out, doing some kind of assumption that you're going to make for salary increases. But as you get further in the year, you actually know who those people are, rather than just assuming that the people from last year are being carried forward into the current year. I mean, you're always going to be assuming two years or three years down the road, you're just assuming a inflationary increase, not necessarily looking at every person as you're updating your salary schedule or your employee list.
Chair, now if I can add to that quickly again. The other, the other thing is, step advancements are not automatic. They do have to reach a certain threshold of days worked in order for them to, to reach that advancement. And the other really big component that we don't know year to year is lane advancement. So when they advance the lanes, that's when they're turning in their course credits, they get it pre-approved, they submit their application. So those are the, those are the movements that we have more firmed up towards the end of the year that we can anticipate for the following year. So, and that has, the lane movement has increased this year in comparison to what we've seen in the past as well.
Okay. Director Atkinson?
I was just going to say, one other thing that came out of our meeting on Tuesday that I want to share with the other board directors is that there was some conversation about REACT and the funding that we received this year that maybe we didn't spend all the funding, and that's why it's in the fund balance. I personally would love to understand how much flexibility is in using that money. Like, instead of using it for professional development, could we use it to hire literacy coaches, or that type of thing? And you don't have to answer right now, but I'd love to understand statutorily, or, you know, what couldn't we possibly use that money for? And then if we are taking the money out of fund balance, which I definitely, I haven't supported since I've sat on this board, what are we specifically using it for, is what I would like to understand for our next meeting?
So specifically, it's on this spreadsheet, it's the green highlighted for each of the columns. It's that dollar amount from those exact purposes for the funding, the revenue stream.
I understand that, I understand the numbers and the revenue stream it's in, but if we're spending money out of LTFM, are we buying cameras for buses? Are we buying, like, my understanding of money that comes, one-time spend money out of our fund balance should be an investment in our district. And so I think it was helpful, the first year that we, I was sat on the board, that we, we did have visibility to that, what those one-time funds spends were for. And I just, I would like to understand that before I can.
Director Atkinson, if I, if I may, yeah. So just a couple of quick things. With regards to the restricted fund balance, I want to be clear for the board and our public. When we're talking about fund balance in general, that's the fund balance that the board has set their policy thresholds around at a minimum and kind of your range, okay, that 8% minimum. What we're talking about here is restricted reserves that has been paid to us for staff development. And for example, some of that staff development dollars that we have in here, we're earmarking because we know we've got new, we have new literacy standards coming. We know on the horizon, we're going to have new math standards coming, and we're going to have new science standards. And I'm not going to hold my breath for social studies. I think that's going to swirl for a little bit longer. But that money that we receive, if we don't use it all, we hold that in reserve. So when we do find these upcoming reviews that we might have to do, so for example, we'll be speaking next week with our, what is it, next week, teaching and learning committee, around how the whole adoption cycle works, as well as how we begin to look at resources in the market. And we may need to bring and kind of test drive some of these resources to see how they perform and students respond to them, et cetera. Well, that money comes from some of our staff development money that we have set aside, that we didn't use maybe in a previous year, and/or we found a curriculum that didn't come in at the same cost. We've found some savings in our curricular purchases. So the PD requirement might be a little bit different, and so we can put that into that restricted reserve. And so I just like our board and our community to understand, pulling out of restricted reserves is different than pulling out of fund balance. They are fundamentally different pots of money. The restricted reserves are money that have been, resources that have been encumbered by the state. The state has paid us a check for those specific purposes. If we found ways to be more nimble with our resources, to kind of hold them and kind of accumulate because we know there's a big adoption coming, we might kind of hold on that and then pull that for those types of adoptions, et cetera. So I just want to be clear that we can talk about how we'll spend some of the reserves that we've identified in those green columns, so you have a better sense on where we think we're going to use this. And to your last question, or part of your question, Director Atkinson, using like PD money for literacy coaches, great idea. That's an ongoing cost. That's not a one-time cost, so we wouldn't ever do that ongoing in a restricted reserve. So would love to do that, but unfortunately, that wouldn't be something that we would use our restricted reserves for.
If I can also add, the literacy aid, there is actually three different pots of money for literacy aid. One of them that we have in here can only be used for, to pay teachers for training. And there was an MOU that I believe this board signed off on. That is what those literacy aid dollars for teacher training is to be used for. And then there's, there's a literacy aid, they used to call it literacy aid, I think they're expanding the name, but it's based on third-grade reading scores that we get every year. We've gotten it for years and years. And that has more flexibility. So that's a separate column on this spreadsheet for that literacy aid. But the ones that they have for the teacher training is very specific in statute that you can only use it to pay teachers for training. And then there's another pot that you can use for curriculum or some of those other things. But this that we have in here is for those teacher training dollars.
So it's almost like, and it helped me understand, it's almost like this, using the term fund balance is kind of a little misleading as I look at this. It's more like it's prior year's revenue that we didn't use.
Yes.
And so, and for whatever reason. And so I guess technically, it's called a fund balance, but it's really not. We're just spending a prior year's revenue in a different year. So if that helps anybody understand.
And we have to report it that way to the state. They're very
I'm sure.
strict about how we're going to report that under the account codes.
And I think that makes sense. Like, what we talked about the finance committee, too, is like, I think we said $300,000 that was sitting in there earmarked for the REACT. Perfectly makes sense to use that money. We've been saving it for that purpose. I think what we're trying to understand is some of the other things, like out of LTFM, what is that money earmarked for? Because is, you know, I would like to understand the criticality of what we need to use that money for, or are we better off saving it just in case another boiler goes out, or some catastrophic event happens to our building, right? That, that's what I would like to understand.
And I can, I can bring some more information on the 19th, but Director Powers has presented his LTFM plan, and I think if you'll notice on the LTFM plan, he is overspending for next year in his project, or his proposal. And that's because there is LTFM money in restricted fund balance.
So that aligns with this 294?
Right.
Okay. I'll look at that.
The LTFM has got a formula assigned to it, and it's based upon age of building, so it is levied. There's certain things that only you can spend that on. And then we have a maintenance budget that is part of the general fund that sometimes supplements it. But for the most part, most of the LTFM needs to be presented to the state. We vote on that a 10-year, every year. And that's where we need to spend it on. And some of the things do get rolled off, or rolled up, et cetera, but we can't spend it on anything other than that's on that list, basically.
Correct. But it's still a reserve balance for kind of the just-in-case things down the road we could potentially use for other things. There's always trade-offs, right?
That's under LTFM. We can't pull it and use it to hire a teacher.
Understand.
Yeah.
Yep. But it's for buildings, so we need to also keep a balance for unknowns.
This might be a clarifying issue for the group, especially with LTFM funds. The, the state, when we have our budget for the LTFM, the, the budget should remain neutral every year, the same. It shouldn't go up or down. They want you to average out to being zero dollars in reserve over a certain amount of time. That's their goal. They want you to use this money as you receive it specifically for those projects. So they, they frown upon us holding money over, they frown upon us overspending money for any of those particular year groups. But what they do allow us to do is like we were able to do this year. And what the district has done in past years, they overspent their LTFM money, so they have to make up that amount in following years. So we had several years where we overspent by a considerable amount. So in the last couple of years, we held back that spending so that we could get back down to that zero mark. So we ended up with a little bit of a budget balance last year because we didn't spend anything on those projects. So the goal that the state would like us to do is to make sure and spend up that balance. Agreed, it would be nice to hold a certain amount in reserve just in case we do have those hidden boilers go out or anything along those lines. Their goal, though, is to make sure that that carryover amount is as low as we possibly can.
But Dan, just to qualify, and I want to make this clear, you just said on the record, we didn't really overspend as much as when we, let's say, when we did the road construction and the stuff between, let's say, Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks. We combined some stuff in there that we had, we were going to do later. It was cheaper to do it
That's
all at once, that sort of thing. So we went up, and then we, the stuff that we didn't spend on the future, on that forecast, then kind of got rolled up into it later on. So it didn't, yeah.
That's exactly it.
It's kind of a roller coaster, as long as the average stays there and we keep it as close to zero as possible.
That's exactly correct. So that's, that's their goal, is that we maintain that number as close to the actual budgeted amount.
Chair White, board directors, on that same, this is a conversation we had in finance committee as well, that the general rule of thumb with MDE is that we are not cash coffers. So the money generated in the academic year by the students who are enrolled should be receiving the benefits of every dollar that they generate in that same current year. Now, we know there's not going to be a true dollar-for-dollar, like we talked about, the ebb and flow. And then we know that we're going to have some grade levels or some years where kids have really high needs, and then some years where kids don't have a lot of needs. And so our resource support might go up and down, but even though we get that flat funding from the state. So a general rule of thumb, MDE expects that we don't just hold resources. Generally, we want to spend on that zero average.
Director Johnson, you have a question?
Understanding the, the REACT here, the staff development as well, maybe if you can lay out a little bit more, would that be also used for REACT training next year, or is that going to be used for something else? And feel free, if you don't, if you don't know the answer, right, we could definitely have a discussion later on in the month. I understand that that's going to cost a lot, and we're going to pay a lot for that, so it would be understandable.
So, so one of the things I wanted to point out, relating back to the MOU that we spoke about at last week's meeting, we, unlike some districts that went to a one-year process to get through the training, we've taken two years because we had time built into our schedule, and we were in the midst of, we're in the midst of a new, specific at the elementary level, year two of a math implementation. So we slowed down, if you will, which did result in some reserve funding there for that, and saved that money to spend for the unexpected situations where we have staff transitioning in and out during that two-year plan because because everybody needs to be complete by June 30th of 2026. So for example, any transitions of new staff into this year, we have to be able to catch them up. Either pay them this summer or into next school year to extend their training. And we had some staff who we trained in advance of this. So that's one place where we will potentially have some additional expenditures. And then also, as Dr. Thomas was talking about, we'll be sharing more detail around this topic at the Teaching and Learning next week. So we can come with some additional information here at the Board Table on the 19th with regard to that implementation of field testing, some resources that we want to consider and any costs associated with that as well.
And if I can just clarify, there, there is the REDACT, literacy aid money for those REDACT implementations. And then there's also a staff development column in there that you'll see. We are required by statute to set aside 2% of our revenue for staff development. Can't be used for anything other than staff development. So that includes textbooks, any training. We give money to the schools. We reallocate money out to the schools for them to buy curriculum and textbooks. And again, if you look at the fund balance from the audit, there is staff development money in there. So again, we don't necessarily spend it all, or we didn't last year. So we're taking some additional of that restricted fund balance for next year, the $238,000 to anticipate some of the staff development needs that we have for next year. But we are required to set that 2% aside. We don't have an option on that.
Okay, thank you. I got one other question. So I just went back to the, the budget book that you put together. And understanding that everything is a forecast, with the projected 25, 26 projection that you had in there. And I could just reference a page number and feel free to get back. Whenever it was, page 22. There, just with the cuts that we made on there, it was almost $125 million versus what we have on here. It just, everything didn't really add up. So if you, you could either reply back to everyone, that would be phenomenal. Just for the 19th, I think that would be great.
That's one of the sheets that we're preparing for you for the 19th. That's going to break down each of those categories. So you'll be able to see exactly all of the increases and decreases. And you can see right where we cut the $4 million and then where there were no reductions.
Excellent. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Director Atkinson?
Yeah. And then Tammy, will you be able to show historical information in the budget? Because I think the document that you shared with us in November, from where we started, it's basically titled Revenue/Expenses. It'd be helpful, I think, to show as we've worked through this budget process now where we've landed. So I just don't know if you're, are you planning to update that as well or?
I think that's what this spreadsheet is intended to, the big spreadsheet that you have in front of you. Those are the revenues and expenses.
This one doesn't show the historical. So there's, you know, it doesn't show like where we were last year or the year before or whatever. And I think the page 22 in your book does show, doesn't it show the historical? Yeah, it shows the actual. So that's what I was referring to.
Yeah. Director Atkinson, those are actually the sheets that we're updating. So that had, I think that came from our scenario sheets in the fall. And those are the ones that we're going to try to identify where the increases and decreases occurred. Again, from the forecast to where we came in as actuals and then where was it? So at the Finance Committee last week, we mentioned like three broad areas that made up for a big, a significant portion of that delta in terms of the expenditures from, from the forecast. And so that will be broken down. I believe that's the document that she's referencing that we'll have for deeper discussion.
It's in our November board book called Revenue/Expenses. So, and it's also this, similar to this page 22.
I think another like flavor of that was in last April's Finance Committee, like this budget. So the categories are just different. So it's hard to like understand where the increases are from last year. So like special ed was one that, you know, caught my eye where I know, I think last year we had around 21 million, but this year I just see a line item for 6.5. So.
No, actually.
I don't know if it's like embedded in the, in the schools.
There's a separate line item on the big spreadsheet for special education. It said 26 million. I miss it. There's a 6.5 like third row up from the bottom. No, State Special Education. It's like, right, there's the unemployment column and access column and State Special Ed.
Yep.
Kind of like in the middle.
And it's 17.7 million. And then there's a federal special ed, right in the next column, that's 1,007.
The fifth column after the second green box at the top. Director Mason?
Okay, yeah. But it's separated. I see what you're seeing. So it's sliced a little differently. So it's separated by school. I got it.
Yep.
Okay.
We disaggregate it on the left
Yep.
per the large aggregated column of categorical aid.
That's the same with your question about the utilities and the transportation. They were one line last year on that other one. And we put it in a separate column so you can see actually how much goes to schools versus how much goes to the department. So we were trying to make this detailed allocation that you have for 25, 26 much more detailed and transparent of where all of the money goes in each of the categorical. And then show where the school, how much the, because I think on that spreadsheet that you looked at from last year, if you look at how much was spent just in that school column, it was like 63 million. But if you look at this spreadsheet, it's 95 million because there's a lot of
All the embedded.
School that are embedded in the department.
That's why it was hard to compare like apples to apples. Like if one school has gone up dramatically versus another because it's all diced a little differently. So that's what I was trying to understand. Okay. I don't know if it, I mean, if there's a way to tie it back to prior year, I guess it'd be helpful to see just like where the increases are.
And I think that will be the update on the sheet that Director Johnson just mentioned that we talked about, I think at Finance Committee last week.
Yep.
That's one that her and Andrea will be working, reworking, kind of retro as much as we can to convey that.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to qualify. Dr. Edwards, she kept on talking about the MOU that we discussed. We actually voted on that MOU for the REDACT training and went through a lot of this discussion last week. And we voted on it at the beginning. So we're not talking about another MOU, are we? No, we're done with that. We've already, okay.
All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of issuance of 25, 26 purchase orders. Director Frederickson?
So this is not anything new. We do this every year because we have staff that leave our buildings for the summer. They try to get orders in for things at the school that they're going to need when school starts because they don't come back in time to get all these orders in. So we just asked the board for approval to issue purchase orders now for 25, 26. It won't be paid for out of this year. We're just issuing the POs so that we'll have the orders for when school starts. But it will be taken out of next year's budgets.
Is there a motion to approve the advanced purchase orders? By Vice Chair Bullion, second? By Director Mason? In discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries 7-0. Moving down to policy, we do have a second and final reading on a number of 200s tonight. I would entertain the idea of approving them all in one motion unless there's a specific policy that someone wants to pull out and talk about separately.
Yes.
Otherwise, Director Johnson, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to pull out Policy 203.
Okay. Then why don't we start discussion on 203 then?
Just with.
Director Johnson, are you talking about 203 or 203 point anything?
Nope, just 203.
Okay, thank you.
So I did reach out to MSBA and after discussion with them and Vice Chair Bullion, I think I would say that we came to the consensus to, on 203, number two, the general, I'm sorry, 203, number three, letter A, we would, after Robert's Rules of Order, we would do a period. And there would not be the four small boards as prescribed by Minnesota School Board Association. That is what their suggestion was. And that's, was their recommendation. And I would like to move that we strike the rest of that.
So period after Robert's Rules of Order?
That is correct.
I'm sorry. I don't know where you are. Can you say that again?
Yep. So go back one page.
Policy 203.
Just regular 203.
Regular 203. Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't very clear with that. I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, just regular 203.
Right here. Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Bullion, you can hit someone.
Yeah, just to, for context and to clarify, the reasoning behind removing that is there is no specific Robert's Rules of Order for small boards. There's books that have been, but it's all, all Robert's Rules of Order rules transcend the different books. And Minnesota School of Business uses Robert's Rules of Order. So just to alleviate any confusion, Robert's Rules of Order is Robert's Rules of Order.
That's correct. Yes.
So it's like the, is there a section within the broader rules that deals with small boards?
Yes. Robert's Rules of Order does talk about small boards under 12, which is what we qualify as.
Okay.
So we would do Robert's Rules of Orders to Small Boards, period?
No, just Robert's Rules of Order, period.
Period.
Okay. Because I'd also talked to the Minnesota School Board Association. And I did that quite a lot in the past week. And they did say that, that, and I did show them previous school board meetings where areas of the book were pulled out. And they would say, well, that doesn't apply to you because you're a large board. Okay, well then, do we use your small board training? And the training that you based on the small boards? Or do we use the larger board? Because it was called out that we needed to have a parliamentarian in one of them. And that, of course, we don't afford or have. It was called out a couple of other things too. So they suggested to me that we use small boards.
The small boards is a part of Robert's Rules of Order.
Right. It's a section of it, but not the whole book. So you can't just pick and choose out of the whole book. You would pick and choose out of that. And they have training, their training for boards is basically on the small boards. Since the boards larger than 12 don't apply to us, which is what the whole book is based upon with a carve-out section for small boards that they train on.
Director France, I think my concern with saying small boards is that there are specific rules for small boards. And we do not use all those rules for small boards. So one of their rules for small boards is you, when you make a motion, you don't need a second. And so if we're going to change the way we work and don't require a second anymore, that is part of the small board rules. So I think stating that means that we need to follow the rules for small boards. And I can tell you from sitting on this board, last year I made several motions and never got a second and the conversation could not continue. So we as a board, we follow Robert's Rules of Order. And I do think we incorporate some things for small boards, like the chair is able to vote and the chair is able to continue or contribute to discussion. But if we're using specific rules for small boards, then we need to change a lot of the things that we're doing currently, including the motions. There will be no second motion needed for a discuss, or for, to bring something to the table or to have a discussion.
Actually, in Robert's Rules, you don't do the motion in the second until you're ready to vote. You don't do it in order to have the discussion either. So.
That's not true.
That is true. Also, you know, the, all the boards don't allow any, any rule or whatever does not allow, actually doesn't even require discussion. It doesn't require the chair to ask for a discussion. It only requires you to allow discussion on every single motion. But the small boards ask for it to be called out in order to, on any major motion after things that you don't have discussion on. So in other words, a major agenda usually doesn't change. So you don't have to call for a discussion on that, but you have to allow it. The larger boards want, so what they described to me is if we're going to deviate from that, that we probably should have a meeting and decide what parts we want to use. Because overall, if we say we're going to use Robert's Rules, what I don't want to do is have any one of the board weaponize the book when something doesn't go their way. And instead us decide what our operating norms are going to be. And if we're going to follow small boards, then we follow small boards. And if we're not going to use parts of small boards, then we actually just memorialize that in a policy. That way, everything runs smooth and there's no question and all that kind of stuff. And so the reason why we had small boards as prescribed by the Minnesota School Board Association is because that's their training. When you go through phase one and phase two for the Robert's Rules, you get trained only on the small boards piece. You don't get paid, get trained on the whole parliamentary structure that happens in parliament legislatures, all that kind of stuff where you actually call and you have, like the small board say 10 minutes max. And that's max per the entire discussion. So you have to call out and say, I yield my time. That's in the full Robert's Rules. We don't do that here because we're trying to encourage open discussion for the small boards. So I just want to make that really clear, that if we're going to do that, then maybe we should have another discussion about what part we're going to use inconsistently and make sure everyone's aware of that. Because we don't yield our time. But that's in Robert's Rules. So, you know, if we pick and choose, that's fine. But let us pick and choose and be in agreement on that. And the only thing we do generally follow is the small board section. That's all I'm trying to say. Because, you know, we have had situations where those, those, you know, you got a book this big and you can find something in there somewhere that applies to parliaments and full legislatures that we're not following when it chooses an argument. But then you decide not to use it on another argument. That's, we don't need that inconsistency. That's all I'm trying to say.
If I could, I think you're talking a lot about procedure, which we could put within the Board Handbook itself.
That would be good. So we could actually refer to that here. And then we can pick and choose which rules we use.
Something.
That agreeable?
If everyone is, we could go to Robert's Rules of Order, period. And then we can bring this up, right, when, as we're working on the handbook itself and memorialize kind of the process within the handbook and how we do things.
Sound good?
I would like for that to be then referred to here so that when we do come up with the procedures, we're using the procedures and not the full book.
Note, refer to handbook or something like that. Understand?
Yep.
Does that sound agreeable to everyone? Okay. So we will put the period at the end of Rules of Order and then scratch the rest and then add a referral to the handbook where those specific rules that we use are spelled out.
Yep.
Just added as cross-reference, like we did the policies. I think that would be, that would work, yeah.
Well, actually, you could put it in here, then Robert's Rules of Order according to the board, or Board Handbook and procedures. That way, because the, I don't know how you would reference that.
Either way, it's, it's, either way, anyway, the language, I mean, we could put according to Board Handbook, which I think accomplishes the same thing.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anything else then on just 203?
That was all I had.
Okay. We can continue on and try to take this all in motion. Is there anything in the others that is? Director Johnson, that you wanted to bring up specifically, any changes from last time? Or are we voting on what we see?
That was, that was it. Other than that, I think Vice Chair Bullion and I got all the changes that were done.
Okay.
I would ask, I would ask if we, under 2.3.1s for school board procedures, then we add another statement in there to refer to the futuristic Board Handbook? Simply because then you go through and you only talk about how a motion is adopted and carried, et cetera. And you've got only a couple pieces in here. And if that's the case, that's what we would be only satisfying our board policy with rules for. So if we're going to expand upon how we conduct the meetings, then we probably need that reference in there. Because you do go into a lot of detail then, like on B, how a motion is adopted and carried, how. how on C, all motions that require a second, so receive a second prior to opening. That's kind of the start of the minimal rules of order. And again, per policy, if we don't actually state it here or state we're going to a handbook, then we only follow the minimum that's in here. And therefore, the first statement with the large statement of all Robert's Rules actually contradicts then two oh three point one.
I think that actually brings up a really big, good point. Because if we're starting to call out all these little things that we follow on Robert's Rules of Order, I mean, Robert's Rules of Order is just like just a giant book of rules, and the rules are in place for a reason. So, I don't think we can cherry pick. I mean, I think it's going to be really hard to cherry pick which ones we're going to use and which ones we can't use. And that's why I think keeping it general for Robert's Rules of Order is actually a really good idea. And when I went to the training, I remember specifically for MSBA, they talked about the need for a motion and a second. And again, that falls under small board rules, don't require a second. So, I, I, I'm just, I, it makes me very concerned that we would, I mean, we use Robert's Rules of Order for a business meeting for a purpose, different than a study session. So.
So, does, to Director France's point, though, does it, does, does putting it in two oh three, three A, that reference to the handbook, does that, does that supersede, transcend the rest of the point one, point two, point three? Or, that's kind of how I would read it.
Yeah, I don't think you can cherry pick.
Two oh three point one, the rules of order that we only call out a couple of them. And again, as Director Atkinson says, that first and a second only corresponds to the Minnesota School Board training. It does not correspond to the actual book. That's the way school boards in Minnesota have done it for a while. That's the way we trained it, and that's the way we're all used to doing it. So, we call that out only as subset of the rules that don't even match the rules of order. So, that's why I was saying it's a contradiction. And, and it's just, it's just so that we have consistency. That's pretty much it. Consistency and also simplicity to get the job done.
Chair White, I'm on MSBA's website. They have their Robert's Basic Rules updated as of January twenty-third, 2025. And it is, it is their training that they offer boards. This twenty-two pages could be referenced or even put into our board manual. But this is what we've, this is the same training that we've all, all received.
And unfortunately, it does not match the full, as we noted, it does not match the full book of Robert's Rules or all the small boards. So, what if we did this? Because we do have a contradiction on the rules of order in two oh three dot one and the other one. Could I ask that you guys go back and look at the MSBA and see if you want to refer to that again, just on the training that they have? Or do you want to leave it as is and put the sub-note in there until we have a handbook?
Well, I, I did ask that specific question. I sent them our specific language that we had in A, and they referred with Robert's Rules of Order, period.
Right.
Not, not MSBA, anything. Robert's Rules of Order, period. That, that is what their suggestion was. Not with MSBA, not with small boards. Robert's Rules of Order. Because having been one of the two people up here to most recently have taken that training, and having done a full series on Robert's Rules of Order, right, you can't, you don't want to sit through that, right? Because it takes quite a long time to do it. And it's very different, right? They're, they're not doing it so that you can ingest the entire book there. They're doing it for the things that mainly apply, which is why we have two oh three point one, which points out the things that we're going to do the most. And that is why they say Robert's Rules of Order, period. And then we have two oh three point one, which gives us our rules. And then we have a study session, right, which we've added in here, which says, we're not going to listen to Robert's Rules of Order. It's going to be different. And then we can say, right, as Director Atkinson suggested, we can put it in the cross-references. At that point, that transcends throughout all of our policies, right, to go back to. So, if we want to add anything specific, we can put it in our board handbook and say, we need to do this within there. That's a very specific thing with this.
So, the policy wouldn't necessarily change. The handbook would change.
The handbook would change, which, right, within our handbook, right, it says we should be going through that every single year.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's not a policy thing, right? As we should go through every three years, our board handbook, we should be going through every single year. And then we can adjust that as we see fit, right? And nitpick little things here and there. That would be my suggestion. Just go back, Rules of Order, period. Add the cross-reference to the board handbook. I understand, right? And then the board handbook is going to come in a month or two, right, to everyone. And then ultimately, every single one of these policies are going to come back up for another approval because they're all going to be in the board handbook again. So, if anybody has anything else, we can.
Adjust at that time.
Adjust at that time.
So, what do we do with the contradiction that currently exists between what you put in three rules of order for how we do motions and what's actually in the Robert's Rules book, then?
Because our policy is more strict. That's why. Two oh three point one is more strict. It lays out the exact thing of what we're going to do.
Okay, so, if Robert's Rules of Order, just to take the example of doing a motion in a second, isn't in there, and yet the very next policy that talks about our rules of order says it's in there, are you suggesting we follow all the other Robert's Rules of Order except for the ones that these supersede?
We're going to follow our policy. Because that's what our policy says that we're going to do. Because our policy is more strict than what it says.
Okay, I'm still, I'm sorry, I'm still not following that.
Director France, can you show me what, where specifically on two oh three point one is the contradiction?
So, if you look at section three in Rules of Order, we talk about raising the hand, a motion will be adopted, a carriage receives affirmative votes, which is fine. But then we also go into require a second, to receive, and receive a second prior to opening the issue. That is not in Robert's Rules.
Yes, it is.
Actually, you just agreed that it wasn't earlier.
No, what, what I said, and I'm sorry if I was confused. But for Robert's Rules of Orders for small boards, it specifically says that there is no second needed in order to bring a discussion to the table. And I know for a fact, we don't operate that way.
So, does the, can we remove that contradiction by, I mean, C seems a bit procedural to me. Can, can C be moved from the policy to the manual?
It can. I wouldn't suggest that.
Yeah, I mean.
I'm just asking a question.
It absolutely can, yes, one hundred percent.
I mean, we sit up here and we say, can we get a motion to, I mean, I, I don't want to give specific examples, but I was on this board last year where I was a minority voice, and I specifically asked, I remember the example, can we bring Dr. Thomas's contract up in March so that we have a full year to review? Can I get a, get a second? Nobody gave me a second. We could not continue that conversation at the table. It happened multiple times while I was on the board. I remember it. You can go back and look at the minutes.
So, your.
So.
But so, your point would be?
My point is being is that the policy, the way it's written, is exactly how, that's how we operate currently, like on our board. That's how we use Robert Rules of Order.
Correct, but the Robert's Rules that's in the book doesn't require first and a second prior to discussion every, and even for small boards, it requires a first and a second prior to a vote.
So, the, so, do we just change this wording to reflect what we do? Because you're right, we, 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 we don't, typically don't discuss until there's a second on the table. That's just because that's when typically the chair asks for discussion. It, it's not necessarily a rule.
Yep.
So, can we change the phrasing here to make it a little more, well, still reflecting how we operate without maybe such a stringent requirement? You understand what I'm saying?
Can you help me understand the way C is written? How we do not operate that way? What part of it don't we currently follow?
So, that's not the point. The point is, we are doing that. The, the point is, is that it contradicts what's in the Robert's Rules of Order book.
No, it doesn't. This is standard, I'm, I, I don't want to be chuckling, but standard oper, operating procedure for Robert's Rules of Order is a motion and a second, and then comes discussion. That is like the basic one-on-one of Robert's Rules of Order.
Actually, no, in the larger book. And if you watch any legislative session.
Oh, I am very well-versed in Robert's Rules of Order, Chair. In fact, I don't want to be on that bag with you, so. So, I just, I think, I'm fine with it.
I guess what I'm trying to say.
And I'm not, I think it muddies the water if we change it, to be honest with you, so.
I guess what I'm trying to say is that either we keep three, and we, we say, except where maybe, you know, the handbook or whatever procedure in, in two oh three. It's just that, you know, the, again, you say Robert's Rules, period. And it's a large book. And I'm going to use the very obvious example of we don't yield time. We don't go through all that. We don't do the whole process in every of our boards. So, like, right now, this discussion wouldn't be allowed under if you're filing the direct Robert's Rules book, this discussion we're having right now. So, the reason why we did small boards specifically and the MSBA reference, which they update every, the, the last update before this one was 2023, is so that we adopt them that are more set to school boards than the way we've been taught, not the full book.
So, then, if we go, if we go back to page seventy-nine, just two oh three A, can that sentence be altered? For instance, Robert's Rules of Order as spelled out in our school board handbook? Because then, would that remove the contradiction then in two oh three point one? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, if we do it in both places. That's what, that's what I was mentioning, is just be consistent. Because otherwise, we're going to end up in a thing where people are cherry picking the rules, and they're not going to go along with what we've normally done.
Is it a big deal getting B to add, as spelled out in the handbook?
I, I have, so, Robert's Rules of Order right here, it says, a motion must be made by a member, seconded by another, and then discussed before putting to a vote.
Right, and that's, that's in the small boards MSBA training.
Well, that.
Only.
And that is what it says.
But that's for Robert's Rules of Order, so.
Right, which is.
I just think if we start, my concern is, I, like, my concern is if we get to the handbook, right, and we're putting down, these are all the Robert's Rules of Order that we follow. I mean, there's going to be unique situations that come up that do fall under Robert's Rules of Order where a minority board member does have the right to do something. And then I don't want to get into a situation where somebody says, well, you can't do that because it's not listed in the ten items that are in a handbook, when Robert's Rules of Order is really to protect the minority voice on the school board. So, I just, I think that, I think getting into the weeds of the, I think we're getting into the weeds, and I really don't think we need to. I think if we follow generally rules of Robert's Rules of Order, I think we're good. Like, just like every other board.
So, how do you have, how do you have, page seventy-nine, A, how do you have that sentence finishing? Director Johnson?
Right now, I have, in conjunction with the school board handbook.
And I would be fine with that. We just need to make it consistent with two oh three point one. That was my comment.
No matter, again, no matter where we put that, even if we put it in as a cross-reference, putting it in once, based off of, based off of additional discussion with Terry Morrow from MSBA, covers us because it transcends the policies.
Okay.
So, whether we put it in one or we put it in both, we're covered either way.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's nothing further on that. I understand what you're saying, Mary, I understand what you're saying, and you're saying. If the consensus of the boards were comfortable with adding that language in two oh three, three A, to cover our tracks in the rest of the policies under two oh three, I'm comfortable with moving ahead.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay. So, if there is no further discussion on the balance of the two oh threes, which would be two oh three, two oh three point one, two oh three point two, two oh three point three, two oh three point four, and two oh three point six, I will entertain a motion to approve those with noted changes. As discussed by Director Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
By Director Atkinson. If there is no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six to one. All right, moving down to administrative reports. Are there any admin reports this evening? Oh, Director Herman?
Chair White, members of the board, I'm just wanting to give a, a quick, two updates. Quick shout-out to the two retirees that we have today on our agenda, wishing them all their best as they explore the next chapter of their life and thank them for their service to our district. And then the next update, I just wanted to give a quick staffing timeline update. I know we shared a little bit last meeting and this meeting. We are continually looking at all the enrollments that are coming in. And as we, we do our sections at this time of the year, we keep a really close eye. We also have to, we'll be working with the Special Education Department to look at how many of those enrollments that we have in the sections are center-based students, resource students. And we'll also be working to identify any of our English language students, any of those needs in certain classrooms as we're looking at the, the total number of sections and the, and total enrollments in, in each of our, our, our classes. From there, we'll continue to look at this each week as we monitor with the class targets and discussion caps moving all the way into starting out the school year. So, we'll keep the board updated as we have any major updates or changes. But we do still have that reserve that we have set aside that we will be closely monitoring on where we can make those adjustments and changes as we move forward in the, in the, the planning for next school year.
All right, thank you. Are there any board reports moving around the table, starting with Director Olsted?
Yes, briefly. I thank you again to Director Mason for sitting in for me on the last month's Southwest Metro Board Meeting. I unfortunately had to miss pizza from the Culinary Arts Students. I had to miss the International Teachers Program update. It was amazing, more work on the strategic plan. And please fill in the blanks here, Director Mason. But we're moving forward with all of those things, and there's a Finance Committee meeting tomorrow that I'll be in. And we have some exciting developments that I can maybe bring next month. So, again, thank you.
Thank you. Director Johnson?
Just wanted to give a shout-out to all of the LABC members that were at the last meeting there, and all of the changeover that's going with all the senior parents that are leaving and all the incoming ones that are coming in. And then to the PAA, people that are, that are continuing to push through and move, maneuver all that. And a shout-out to the High School Choir for the, the seventies show that they just put on. It was absolutely phenomenal, so, yeah, that's it.
Director Atkinson?
Yeah, I attended the Early Childhood Education Advisory Committee. And they're just really busy planning for next fall. So, they're planning some fun events and some new classes. And then they've done a book swap that's gone really well. And they're having a, a spring playground event that they had, actually, on May first. Oh, my gosh, it's already May fifth. And then I already gave a lot of details during our board meeting this evening about the Finance Advisory Committee. Thank you to our new members for attending and participating. I thought it was a great meeting and look forward to our next one, so.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Bullion? Director France?
Yes, so, we kind of already talked about the teaching and learning and everything that happened before that I, I did miss. So, thank you, Director Olsted, for showing up to that last time. But scale will be on our last phase of discussing waste management Uh, but scale will be on our last phase of discussing waste management and all the implied tax issues that are going to hit our county, uh, as well as the, uh, we're running out of time with our, um, with the, uh, ability to have, uh, new landfills, et cetera. And they are trying to figure out ways to increase recycling. So we have one more, um, one more round of that, uh, coming up. Uh, and it will affect our taxes eventually. Um, as far as the legislative update goes, uh, the publication process or the ability for us to not have to publish in a paper, looks like there is no contention to it. So that will probably pass as far as the education bills, as you guys all know. As of last Friday, they pretty much passed all the low hanging fruit and got an agreement between the two houses and the majority of health, education, and the rest of the items that are still, uh, outstanding. There's a pretty big gap still, uh, between all, between the governor, the senate and the house. Um, they may have to go in a special session, uh, but the biggest issue is of course the free and reduced lunch, the all, the free lunch. That's probably looking like it's going to be on the chopping block, uh, which is going to cause us to do some rework in that area. But I will leave that up to, uh, Director Malone to, uh, figure out how to do that. But that's where we are with the legislative process. And again, the next scale meeting is this coming Friday.
Hi. Thank you.
Question on the, um, do you all, did you all get the grid from MSBA on the legislative updates? The side by side grid? Did that come to you guys? It was a really unique visual that we had in AMSD last week.
I think we might, we might have got, unless we might have just gotten some.
MSBA sent one out. I think the AMSD did too to everybody.
The chart? Okay. I just wanted to make sure you guys got that one, which I thought was a good visualization of what you just shared.
Yeah. It's, it's pretty far apart actually. So we got a long way to go and only fourteen legislative sessions, days left to do it in. Um, so, uh, they are anticipating a probable special session on that, which of course leaves our next year's budget based upon what they do a little bit in limbo. Um, so that's it.
All right. Thank you. Director Mason?
Um, yeah. As Director Elsted said, I, I attended the Southwest Metro Board Meeting. So that was my first time attending that. It was great. Um, celebrated several successes, international teachers program and the culinary program. Um, and then also highlighted, uh, Prior Lake Drew Henin. I thought it was really cool. Um, uh, twenty twenty-five Special Olympic, uh, World Game in, um, Italy for snowshoeing. So if you haven't read that story, it was kind of neat. Um, and then I wanted to thank, uh, some teachers and Principal Sherman at, uh, Five Hawks for letting me come in, um, a couple of Fridays ago. I spent a couple of hours there and, um, saddened, uh, some foundations and Bridges Math. So, um, saw that in action and got to have lunch Dairy Queen with a couple of students. And so that was super fun. Um, and then, yeah, welcome also the additional finance committee members and a couple of new people that I hadn't met there. And then also looking forward to the SEEK meeting this Wednesday.
All right. Thank you. And I just want to reiterate what Director Johnson said about the choral concert. I've had a chance to attend a number of those post having kids in school over the last years. And going back to when I hadn't, we hadn't exchanged student a number of years ago. A highlight of her year here was that, that show. And as someone who was real involved in choral music in high school here in Prior Lake, um, nothing stretches a student, uh, belief in what they're capable of more than making them stand in front of an audience and sing a song. So, uh, I was blown away by, by, by the, by the talent and, uh, just the whole show, what an undertaking by our staff. And, you know, Director's honor, listen. So it was, uh, great fun. So.
I have one more thing to add that I forgot to add. Uh, Community Ed is obviously hiring for their summer sessions. And they are looking to hire high school students. So if anyone's listening to this and they are looking for a job for the summer, uh, they have plenty of openings and they do hire high school students for the, uh, lower kids or the younger kid, uh, supervisory areas and staffing. So they did want me to ask that.
All right. Um, we have future events as listed, uh, probably most importantly or most urgently is the next, uh, study session on May nineteenth. Uh, we've reached the, uh, end of this part of the agenda. I will now entertain a motion to enter a closed session for the purposes of discussing, uh, negotiation strategies with the P L S E A. So is there a motion to enter the closed session? By Director Johnson? Second?
Second.
Director Olsted? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries seven zero and we'll take five minutes to let everybody clear out who needs to and be back here at seven fifty-nine.